Let's call a meeting order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
He's excused out on vacation.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
He's also on vacation.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our June 16th, 2017 council meeting. Everybody had a chance to review, are there any corrections or comments? If none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the minutes from the June 6th, 2017 regular city council meeting.
Second?
A resolution by Christine Casto, a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of five to zero with council members Marler and Anderson absent.
Next, we have a presentation of the 2016 financial audit, Ms. Kenny.
So you brought a fund group with you tonight.
We got, a lot of fun going on here. Good evening, mayor and council. I want to reintroduce our financial audit tonight, but first, I want to reintroduce you to the fund department. Please stand as I say your name. Please hold all your applause until the end. Chris Boston is our general accounting manager. Natasha Lang Creek is our accounts payable technician. Lori Whitney is our payroll technician. Connie Musgrave is the customer service manager in utility billing. And Doug Hoffman is our purchasing and inventory control person. So, okay, now you can clap. Good, I thought it was going to be like trying to get somebody to clap in church, but you guys, you rock it. I want to thank them all for their hard work to prepare for and get through another audit. And yes, an audit is like grief. You never get over it, you just get through it. All joking aside, the preparation and the results were great. We were able to get through it and maintain our standing as the fund department for the city of Fort Morgan. And to let you in on a little secret, it really isn't the department that's fun, it's the people. Thanks to all you guys, really appreciate all your hard work this year. I also want to thank Anton Collins Mitchell for their hard work on our audit and for their help getting through, help throughout the entire year answering questions that I call about, and I really appreciate that. Presenting our audit tonight is Tyra Litzu. Tyra is the audit director for Anton Collins Mitchell and is highly involved in our audit. Thank you.
As Jeanie mentioned, my name is Tyra Litzu. I'm the audit director for Anton Collins Mitchell. So I oversaw the audit of the city of Fort Morgan. I will go over two documents tonight. One is the shorter, the first one I'll go through is the shorter of the two. This is the audit rap document. This is the required communications to those charged with governance as the results of our audit. In this case, those charged with governance is the city council of Fort Morgan. So on page three, the status of our audit. This says we have substantially completed our audit of the financial statements of the city as of December 31st, 2016. The draft that I'll be going over in front of you tonight is a final version of the draft. We are going through our final quality control review processes over the financial statements themselves, but we don't anticipate any significant changes to those and will communicate anything that we might find to Jeanie. The objective of our audit is always to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. What that means is we do a risk-based audit approach where we look at significant transactions. We look at significant balances, but we don't actually audit every single transaction that the city enters into. So that's why we can only provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance on the financial statements. The work of the audit was substantially the same as what was communicated in our planning communications. And we do expect to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion, that's what you're always striving to accomplish as part of the audit. There's additional information within the financial statements, including management's discussion and analysis. We don't actually give an opinion on every single piece of the financial statements, but we do read everything to make sure it's materially consistent with the financial statements themselves. Everything that we asked for was made available and management's cooperation was excellent. You know, as Jeanie mentioned, without the help of the fund department here, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish the audit. We give them a really long list of everything that we need before the audit even starts. We come out, we ask for more documentation, we ask a lot of questions. We ask questions after we leave the field. So they're doing all this in addition to their normal everyday job functions. So we do really appreciate everybody's help with the audit this year. Continuing on to page four, the results of our audit. There was a new standard that was implemented this year and it has to do with fair value measurements. It doesn't actually change how the investments are reported on the financial statements. It just adds an additional disclosure. There's just, I feel like every year I come to you and we talk about new accounting standards that are implemented within the city's financial statements. So we do keep up to date with those and we do present that to management to make sure that everybody is aware of all the new standards that are coming out. There were no changes to significant assumptions or estimates during the year. Continuing on page four, like I mentioned, the primary areas of focus that we look at. We do look at revenue recognition. The city earns revenue from various sources, so we're making sure that it's being recorded in the proper period, the proper fund, and it's being categorized correctly. We look at accounts receivables and we look at any allowances on those receivables to make sure that they're accurate and that they'll be deemed collectible. Capital assets is a large balance that continues to gain new capital assets every year. So we look at the capital assets additions as well as any depreciation on current assets to make sure they're being properly depreciated. And the city currently has outstanding bonds and notes payable totaling about $15.9 million, all in the business type activities, which are your enterprise funds. So we look at those to make sure that they're being paid down in accordance with the debt maturities and we confirm those balances. Continuing on to page five, the city does have several defined benefit plans. One is relating to the employees that are in para. And then there's also an old hire plan as well as a volunteer firefighter plan. Those are with FPPA. As part of that, there is additional testing that we have to do. There's also additional reporting. If you remember last year, that's when the city did implement it. The footnotes are in a lot of length of detail about what those plans represent. And the city does have a net pension liability that's reported on the financial statements resulting from those three plans. Going concern, we didn't identify any going concern issues and estimates were determined to be reasonable and free of bias. Attached to this document at the back is some adjusting journal entries that we posted. One was to move a grant from one fund into another, just to make sure it was from the Conservation Trust Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund because those are the expenses that were paid for from the grant. And then we did the journal entry for the implementation or the GASB 68, which is the net pension liability. So those are the two adjustments that were made during the audit. Continuing on to page six, as part of our audit, we do gain an understanding of internal controls at the city. We don't give an actual opinion on those internal controls. We're looking for, you know, significant areas, you know, management recommendations of anything that we identify to be a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal controls. And we didn't identify any internal control items that were determined to be material weaknesses. So there's nothing to report. Just some other required communications. There weren't, like I mentioned, there weren't any significant changes to the planned audit strategy. No violations or possible violations of laws or regulations. We aren't aware of any consultations with any outside accounting or audit firms. No disagreements with management, no significant difficulties. And as the last part of the audit, we will ask for a management representation letter from the city just to confirm in writing a lot of the information we received. The last page on this document just confirms that we are independent. Our firm is independent with both acting appearance from the city of Fort Morgan. I went through that pretty quickly, so if there's any questions, please let me know. The next document I'll go through is the larger of the two. This is the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2016 in the draft, the final draft format. The first two pages of this document is just our auditors' reports. As I indicated, we are giving an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. This just details out what management's responsible for and what we're responsible for for the audit. Starting on page three is management's discussion and analysis. I won't go into this in a lot of detail, but I think that this is a really important piece of the financial statements. It's the only part of the financial statements that has comparative information. We're showing both 2015 and 2016 information. This is really where management determines or details out, you know, what happened at the city. What were the changes year over year? Why was capital assets greater? Why was the debt less? I just encourage you to read that. I think that this provides more layman's terms of everything that's within the financial statements themselves. On page 14 is the statement of net position of the city of Fort Morgan. This shows at the end of the year, all of the assets as well as all the liabilities of the city. You'll see that you do have a net pension liability of about $8.3 million in your governmental activities as well as $5.1 million in your business type activities, so a total of about $13.4. Like I mentioned, the city does have three different plans that represents that total net pension liability. The old hire plan, the volunteer plan, as well as para. So with para, that one is a cost sharing plan to where the city contributes what's required as part of statute. Those funds aren't specifically set aside for anybody at the city. It gets pooled together with all of the other participating entities throughout the state in the local government plan. Every year, para does do an actuarial study to where they're determining, you know, everybody that's in the plan as of a certain point in time, they're projecting out what they anticipate the benefits will be for the people in the plan. They're comparing that to the projected assets, which is basically all the cash and investments that's being held with that plan, you know, using an average rate of return of about seven and a half percent. The difference between what they're projecting the assets and what they're projecting the liabilities is either a net pension asset or a net pension liability. In case of para, it is a net pension liability. It's about 59% funded right now. And the city then records their proportionate share of that liability. So it's basically the city's contributions for the year divided by the total contributions that para received. That percentage is then taken across to all the information that para has provided to you. So that's a different plan than your volunteer and your old hire. Both of those plans are specifically set aside for the city of Fort Morgan. So those assets are Fort Morgan's assets. They have an actuarial study that's done every other year. Those are specific plans for the city of Fort Morgan. So those are the difference, but the three of them combined will make up that $13 million. And the footnotes give more information about each of those plans individually, including what portion of the net pension liability is represented with those plans. At the end of the year, your total net position in your governmental activities was about $54 million. Your business type activities was about $81.8 million. A lot of that is tied up in what is called the net investment in capital assets. That's basically your capital assets less any liabilities that were paid for that. You do have some restrictions. There's a portion of that's related to donations. A portion of that is related to your capital improvement. The Capital Improvement Fund is specifically restricted for capital improvements. And then a portion of that is related to Tabor restrictions, where you're restricted 3% of the Tabor spending. And the rest of it is unrestricted. That hasn't been restricted by any outside source. Continuing on to page 15 and 16 is the statement activities for the city. This shows all the revenues and all the expenses going through the statement activities. At the end of the year, your governmental activities did increase your net position about $3.5 million as well as your business type activities about $3.1 million. So in total, it increased about $6.7 million. And that includes that change in that net pension liability. So the net pension liability did change, did increase this year. So those expenses are reflected in that. And even with those changes, you know, that just means that the city brought in more revenue than it spent during the year. Page 17 shows more information on the balance sheet for the governmental funds. You'll see your general fund and the Capital Improvement Fund as one specific column. Your other governmental funds, you have three different governmental funds. The Conservation Trust Fund is one of them. And this shows then your fund balance at the end of the year. And for your fund balance, the difference is this statement doesn't include any long-term capital assets or long-term debt. So that's the main difference between the schedule and the other schedule. Your total fund balance in your governmental funds is about $22.7 million. Most of that is unassigned fund balance. That just means that it hasn't been assigned or restricted or committed for any purpose by city council or outside entities. Page 18 will show you the reconciliation that gives you back from one statement to the other. On page 19 shows the revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance for the governmental funds again. This shows that you have positive changes in fund balance for all of the governmental funds of about $30.4 million. That just means on those funds, you've brought in more money than you've spent. And the difference between this statement and the one that I presented earlier is those changes. You know, capital expenditures are shown as an expenditure in these funds, but they get added to the capital assets and depreciated. So those are some of the key differences between that schedule that I presented earlier and this one, which is detailed out on page 20. Pages 21 through 24 are the financial statements for your proprietary funds. This shows the electric fund, water fund, gas fund, and wastewater fund, all separately. Other enterprise funds is your two other enterprise funds together, and then also your internal service fund. This information is the exact same as what was on the statement of net position. It just provides it in more detail and by the fund level. So I won't go through those unless there's any questions. Pages 23 and 24 does give more information on a cash basis, more of where the monies were received by the city and where the monies were spent in those funds. Pages 25 and 26 do give more information about your fiduciary funds. One is the cemetery perpetual care fund and then the Riverview Commons Fund. Those are the activities for that. Starting on page 27 is the footnotes for the city. I won't go into those in a lot of detail. There's not a lot of significant changes. I will just point out a few things that I think are important to know. Page 36 shows you all of the cash and cash equivalents and all the investments that the city has. It shows it, you know, $63 million is the total in cash, cash equivalents and investments and where those monies are being held. As well as down below, you'll see the investment balances specifically of the $46 million. So that gives more information to the users of the financial statements where the city holds all their funds. Pages 38 and 39 gives more information about the capital assets. So you did have a lot of capital asset additions, both in the governmental activities as well as your business type activities. There weren't very many disposals of assets, but there were a few. Shows how the depreciation is allocated between the different categories and the different funds. Page 30, starting on page 39 is the debt footnote. You will see that your capital leases were paid off during 2016, so you no longer have an obligation for those capital leases. In the governmental activities, the only debt you have is compensated absences, which is just basically the accrued vacation and sick leave that you allow your employees to accrue. And if they were to leave employment, those would be paid out by the city. On page 40, you will see that you have that water, the water revenue refunding bond outstanding of about $13.2 million. You do have the CWR PDA note of about $2.4 million as well as that mean payable that you're paying down of about $227,000. That's going to be paid off in the next two years. The footnotes do give more information about what those all represent, but on page 41, this will show you that the first five years individually and then five-year increments after that, what the city is committed to pay down on those bonds and that loan. So that gives more information of what's been obligated. Starting on page 41 is the pension plan footnote. Like I mentioned, you have those, the first section has to do with the volunteer fire department pension plan. Of that plan, you'll see that the reliability is about $1.2 million of that $13 million. So that's a piece of that volunteer plan's liability. One thing I do like to point out on page 44, one of the biggest assumptions that the actuarial uses to do their actuarial study is that investment rate of return of about seven and a half percent. So they do a sensitivity analysis that's required in the footnotes to really show how much that impacts that projection. So at the current discount rate of seven and a half percent, you do have the liability of about 1.3. If it was to increase to eight and a half percent, your liability would go down to about $1 million. If it was to decrease to six and a half percent, it would go up to about 1.5. So that does impact that liability quite a bit. Continuing down on the bottom of page 44, you'll see the information about the old hire plan. That plan has a net pension liability of about $835,000. Again, the actuarial study is done every other year. It gives more information on the notes. Page 47 again shows that sensitivity analysis of you increase it by one and a half, 1% or decrease it by 1%. I think the biggest portion of the net pension liability is actually relating to the plan with para, that cost sharing plan. Like I mentioned, it's about 59% funded. So that gives more information about the plan, who's all in the plan, not just at the city, but all across the state. Who pays into the plan, what's required to be paid in. You'll see that the liability on page 49 is about $11.3 million. I just want to point out that that doesn't mean that the city has to write a check for $11.3 million to pay down the liability to para. You'll see in the schedules in the back, that liability didn't come about because the city didn't pay what they were required to. They've been paying everything that's been required by statute. It just came about, you know, versus who's in the plan, what they projected out. So it's not like you can go, I've told people, you can't go write a check and pay off that debt. That's not how that liability works. But you'll see then on page 52, again, the seven and a half percent rate of return is probably the most significant on this plan. At the current rate, it's $11.3 million liability. If they were to increase to eight and a half percent, that liability would go down to 6.3. If it was to decrease to six and a half percent, it would go up to about 17.4. So I think that's probably the most significant item. On pages 54 and 55, you'll see your general fund budget to actual statement. This shows on the budgeted side, both the original and the final budget as compared to your actuals, both in the revenues and expenditures. This shows you at the end of the year, you did have a positive increase of about $2.7 million, which is, and, you know, which is better than your budgeted because you only had budgeted a positive increase of about $387,000. So that's a good trend. Page 56 shows the same information for the Capital Improvement Fund. I just want to go through a few last of the schedules. Starting on page 57 is those plan requirements, like I mentioned. Pages 57 and 58 does show the information about para. Particularly on page 58, you'll see that para, that liability doesn't come about, like I mentioned, because you weren't paying into the plan as required. And I apologize because on page 57, I did misspeak. The plan is actually 77% funded, not 59% funded. I think I was thinking of the school districts plan, so I apologize for that. But given that, it's still not fully funded. The remaining schedules I won't go into, but those are your remaining budget to actual statements for the rest of your funds, other than your general fund and the Capital Improvement Fund that I went over. And then the last schedule is a required report from the state for the highway users tax. So that's what the last schedule is on the back of that statement. I went through a lot of numbers pretty quickly, so if there's any questions, please do let me know.
Is this the same draft that we got two weeks ago?
The only difference was in the management's discussion analysis. There was a few formatting things that were identified. Nothing significant, though.
Okay, so as far as the spreadsheets, the figures and that, it's the same as what we got?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or?
I'd only make a quick comment. We really do appreciate all the work that everybody puts into the audit. And one of the things that's coming up really soon on the horizon for the city is that we will be going out to bond for various projects. And our audit is extremely important for the rating agencies when we go to public offering to obtain municipal bonds because it demonstrates how well we manage money. And I think that overall, we do a really good job in managing the public's money and it's going to be beneficial for us here in the next couple of years when we go out to the rating agencies to get rated for bonds. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeanie and crew. Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a multifamily residential use in a B2 general business zoning district at 207 South Sherman. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time will be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony and questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony that I determine to be necessary. testimony that I determine to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June sixteen.
Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Miller.
Nothing but time. We'll get to those in a minute. Good evening. We're here tonight with Mr. Singh, who currently operates a gas station store at two oh seven South Sherman Street. He owns both lots at this address, for which there's vacant land. He's proposing to construct multifamily dwellings on the vacant land, as shown in the attachments in your packet. If the special use is approved, an administrative replat would be required here to adjust the lot lines between the two lots to construct the structures, as indicated on the included portion of the proposed replat. So the image you're looking at here, Lot Four and Lot Three, mirror how it sits today on Lot One and Lot Two. The image you're looking at is what's being proposed from the replat side of things that would be handled administratively, since Mr. Singh owns both parcels of land, making this a possibility. Some additional background, Planning Commission reviewed this case on June twenty-six. There was a lot of discussion and deliberation after hearing the presentation and asking questions of staff, the applicant, and ultimately hearing comments from a homeowner and his wife, who live across the street from the proposed housing, who are against the special use as proposed. The Planning Commission then made a recommendation, with not all members in support, subject to three conditions as requested by staff, which are also shown today under the action requested line in my memo, along with an additional condition, that housing be lower density than proposed, with no more than three one-story duplexes, to have no more than a total of eighteen bedrooms between the six living units. So I just want to show a couple pictures here briefly, and then. So this is the gas station, and ultimately, the property we're referencing in the application. And I'll just kind of cycle through some of these, and if we need to go back to them or through them, we will. This is off of Commerce Street, looking to the south. Property noticed from Sherman Street, facing back to the west. As the property sits today. An aerial of the broader proximity where this sits, with the gas station and the L-shaped land, if it would be replatted for the development. And then I believe I zoom in a little closer, so you guys can see that. So my office, Economic Development Office, has done some additional review on this, and with a survey that was completed last fall, there is a huge need for housing in our community. Numbers vary depending on who you talk to, but the most recent survey that was produced that I have seen highlights a need for at least three-hundred-and-twenty-five multifamily units in our community, to meet the needs of the four largest employers, which are the hospital, school district, Cargill, and La Prino. That's who the four employers were that were surveyed. From an objective review, city staff believes the proposed residential use is compatible with the adjacent uses and the adjacent zoning districts, and would have very few impacts on the adjacent properties. Based on the drawing and taking into account some of the concerns raised at Planning Commission tied to parking, it appears there's sufficient off-street parking that would be along the south and west sides of the lot for those that reside there. In addition, to reemphasize the great need for housing in our community for more living spaces, with this being an opportunity to achieve this, albeit a small part, and clean up an area of unused land, which would be an improvement to the area. Therefore, based on staff's subjective review of the proposed use and applicable codes, city staff is still recommending conditional approval of Case one seven dash zero zero eight S-U, Special Use Permit for Multifamily Residential in the B-two general zoning district as originally proposed, subject to the following: that the applicant work with the city administratively to replat the two lots, adjusting the lot lines as needed; that the site plan be submitted for review to verify compliance with all applicable codes; and that the special use runs with the land in perpetuity. That's it.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address counsel?
Could we have you sign in on the sheet next to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. I'm eleven, a comer city, and I'm running a business here since nineteen ninety-two, and I own the property two oh seven South Sherman Street, and we like to build multifamily residence.
Okay. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the council on this issue? If so, step to the podium and sign in, please.
I live at two eighteen South Sherman, and I would like to voice my opposition to the special use permit allowing a multiple family in a B-two zone. I live right across the street to the east from the proposed site. East across the street of the proposed property is a family, a multiple family, or very nice single-family housing, all along Sherman Street, on the east side, all along there. And on the south side of the proposed site, there's a nice church, and from there on is a single-family residential housing. One of the reasons I bought my house is because it was no multiple family allowed in that area when I bought my house at that time. To the south of the site, I mean, Mr. Singh intent to build up to four one-two bedrooms apartments, two-story units, sixteen apartments total. There's a possible sixteen-bedroom apartments, times four people per apartment, it's possible sixty-four people. Or according to the layout of the four storage units, two of them were faced to the south, and two were faced to the west. To the west, the west one was faced a metal warehouse, office, building, and metal storage units. That's the way they would face. I look at these to becoming low-income units. These multiple housing units were lower value of our homes in our neighborhood. I also question the safety being next to the gas station, both to the north and south. Also, underground filled tanks will also be in the vicinity of the south units. You could have sixteen-plus vehicles entering from Sherman Street. Sherman Street is real busy and congested now, since opening Coma to Main. I don't see any place for the kids to play, as shown in the drawings. According to the analysis of the land use code, C number three, that the special use will not change the predominant character of the neighborhood. It will. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anybody else who signed in, please?
Good evening. Seems like I was just here not that long ago.
I remember that.
And just to go back to what I went through, you know, I bought an R-one zone house. I asked to be brought to an R-two, do a one-bedroom apartment that was originally built that way. I thought it was going to be grandfathered, but I knew when I bought R-one, I was buying R-one, okay? So when you decided not to go with that, I respected that. I understood that, buying the property. I bought commercial property. I got early business property in Fort Morgan. I don't expect to take my business and change it into apartment complex without, you know, buying a commercial property and changing it into that doesn't seem right. I would never even ask for that. Usually, I buy the property knowing what the use is going to be for it. And changing this is going to change the house I bought directly across the street, which is two oh four South Sherman. And I put a lot of money, time, and sweat and toil into that to bring something that was ran down to really nice condition, because the rest of that neighborhood is in nice condition. I think this will bring in low-income housing. I think more than think. I've ran rental properties and managed rental properties for at least twenty years now. I know what's going to attract, okay? And the impact on Sherman, as stated before, is going to be major. Now, each apartment, I don't know if I can ask questions, but each apartment, can you have four separate individuals living in the apartment that are non-related?
Are you referring to the definition of a family unit? That's in flex, but typically, I'd have to refer to the code to be sure, but typically, it's no more than three unrelated persons. But there are some exceptions with the Fair Housing Act.
Okay. And then how many, if you are related, how many can live into an apartment?
In any residential use, if you're related, there's no limit currently, whether it's R-one, R-two, R-three, or any others.
And council turned me down for going to, you know, from R-one to R-two, this for a one-bedroom apartment, which would have the low impact on that neighborhood. This is going to have huge impact on ours. That's all I have to say.
Does anybody else wish to address counsel on this issue?
I live at two 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 South Sherman, and I don't agree with building more apartments in that, or building any apartments in that area. I feel that it's already kind of de facto been decided that that's a business area, because just surrounding it, I mean, there's a church, the gas station behind it, there's storage units across the street on, I believe it's Centennial. You know, there's Top Door, and then I always say the name wrong. It's Slumber.
Slumber J.
Yeah, thank you. And I just feel that area, like I said, has already been decided as a business area and not a residential area. And I just, like my neighbor brought up, there's no room for the kids to play, and being surrounded by all the businesses is just not an appropriate area for a family to live. I mean, we live across the street, but we're separated, and we have our own backyards to play in if we want to have our kids outside. But for the multiple, for the multiple family housing, they won't have that same opportunity because of the condensed area that they're in. So I don't think that it's a very good idea to change it and allow this multiple family
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? There are none?
Hi, my name is Luisa, and I live at two fourteen South Sherman, which is right across from where the apartments are planning to be built. I feel like this will affect our whole side of our residential areas with parking. Like I said, if it's sixteen apartments, put sixteen cars, they might fit on the lot, but what if those people have two vehicles or three? They'll be parking when it is on our side of the street. I know it's public parking, but yet you have people getting off and on cars, which causes also trash. We kind of do have an issue with trash blowing into our yards, and we do try to keep our houses nice and neat. And we moved in there three years ago due to, we liked the area. It seemed very nice, friendly, multi, like families, just, but a multifamily feels like too congested to what we are living in now. And what I fear, having a six-year-old, is that, oh, my ball ran into the street, I'm gonna go get it. If we have multiple kids playing out there, Sherman is pretty busy. People just, from the stop sign, from the four stops, people just go down. So I don't feel like people are going to be like, oh, let's just drive down here, children playing, and slow down. It's not really what Sherman is built to. It's just like a high-traffic area. And also, another concern is when the train is stopped there, it causes a lot of congestion, and people, they do get road rages in Fort Morgan, but you say there's no traffic, but seven-thirty in the morning, there is a lot of traffic. And people sometimes don't know how to respect the right of way, because I've noticed when the train stopped, people would take the edge of the street where cars park, and sometimes our dumpsters are there, because it's trash day, and people just ram through there. So I feel like that would cause also a lot of issues with vehicles and all that. So I oppose to this as well. And like he said, that site is built, like, for more business type, and I feel like people might be more injure-prone on that side of where the apartments would be. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address counsel? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, I did. I received three phone calls today about this application. The first was from Sam Graville of seven twenty-one Gateway Avenue, who said he was opposed to this use. Mr. Graville said he did not think multifamily use for this project were a good fit for this neighborhood, and with all the congestion already in this area, this would only make it worse and really make it a nightmare. The second call was from Thel McCarr of three oh eight South Sherman, saying she had been told about the housing project being proposed and was really against it. The third call was from Mary Ann Johnson of two ten South Sherman, who said she wanted to voice her opinion on the proposed housing development across the street from her home. She said she was afraid it would turn into what a lot of low-income housing does, like gateway apartments and those near the old middle school. She said due to the high traffic on South Sherman, she was concerned about that many more people and whether there, that many more people and whether there would be enough parking. She also said she gets trash on her property from the little store already, and was concerned about that getting worse if it was a housing development. about that getting worse if it was a housing development.
We'll now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or discussion?
First thing, I was just going to ask Josh. You'd said that the planning commission recommended doing just three duplex buildings. Is that, did I hear you right about that, or?
I believe that's what it said. They wanted, they requested lower density.
Yeah, they made a motion based on the proposed four draw, uh, four-unit drawing that the density not exceed three buildings, single-story, no more than 18 bedrooms between the three units.
And that was the planning commission's recommendation?
Yeah.
And so that, where that's not a part of the proposed restrictions and stuff like that, that still is what is being proposed, or?
No, what I'm proposing is originally what was proposed to planning commission and that the use be approved as presented to planning commission and that the multifamily use be approved contingent on the three requests that I made.
Okay.
There has not been a site plan submitted yet to know if the site--
No, in large part with this and development in general, people aren't going to spend thousands of dollars engineering and designing a building unless they know the use is allowed. You know, I respect low-income concerns as well, but based on somebody investing millions of dollars in the building of buildings, there's going to be market rate units, there's not low-income ties attached to this and/or funding, so I realize there's a stigma that comes with that, but these aren't low-income--
Do we know that the setbacks will be met and the parking requirements?
We don't, because we haven't reviewed that. We've just specifically reviewed the proposed use, and we believe the proposed use is in accordance with the adjacent properties' uses defined by both of the zoning districts that exist in that area.
If I, if I could interject, any of the parking requirements, setback requirements, or any other building code requirements would all have to be met in order for the use to continue. So, as proposed, four units, two stories, if those don't all fit because they don't have enough parking spots, they can't proceed with that. They'd have to do something different. If the setbacks don't work because of the underground storage or because of the property lines, however that works, if the setbacks aren't sufficient, then they can't do it. So we're not giving them carte blanche authority to do whatever they would want to do. They still have to meet the letter of the code. If it comes, in theory, if they come back because they can't make the setback requirements, they could request a variance, which is an entirely separate process. But this is just to review whether or not the use is appropriate for the area.
Jason, one of the requested actions from staff is that the special use permit runs with the land in perpetuity. So what is, so, so if we do, if we did grant this change, what could, you know, if they sell the land, what could, you know, happen to that land if we, if we have that perpetuity piece in there?
It can continue to operate as a multifamily unit. The reason we would have that as opposed to some other special uses, which might be more of temporary nature, which when they go to sell, you might want it to be renegotiated. You could look at a family care center might be a good example of that, where you're not necessarily trusting the next family care center into that place is going to be run as well. You could have that condition that it's only for that owner in perpetuity, basically. We don't want to create a non-conforming use as soon as he may or may not sell the property in the future. Any expansion on the special use would have to, you know, if, if it's approved as is and somebody down the road wants to add a third story, they'd have to come in and ask for permission to do that. It doesn't give them carte blanche authority. What's approved is whatever council approves, and that use is allowed in perpetuity if the council approves that, that way. Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I have two questions. One, just so I understand, so Josh, you're saying what's proposed in the action is as it stands, 16 units, 24 bedrooms, four buildings, correct?
I don't know what will be proposed. This is what we know based on the application. What I'm recommending is that the multifamily use, multifamily is broad, the definition of what that can entail, and again, it's going to, what's allowable will be specific to what they can conform to based on the building code requirements and so on and so forth. What I'm recommending is based on the review of what is across the street where multifamily is an allowable use, going down Commerce Street where multifamily exists today, the use of multifamily in and within those two zoning districts with my objective review, this doesn't change the makeup of what is already currently allowed within those zoning districts that exist there today. Therefore, this does not impact and is not a far stretch to what can be done in the general vicinity of the property.
And this next question might, I'm not sure which, it might be more, Jason. So it seems that a large concern of many of the people that spoke is the potential for low-income housing. That's definitely outside of the control of council, correct? As to once, if we choose to approve this, the landowner can do what they want, correct?
Correct.
And it would be outside of our, it would be legally outside of our realm to put those kind of--
I would recommend that council not get into the venue of deciding who can and can't live in certain places. It could create, risk the city running afoul of the Fair Housing Act. There are limitations that can exist under the special use authority. You can limit, as planning commission suggested, the number of units that can be allowed, number of bedrooms, however council wants to carve that apple, or say, as proposed, no more than what's proposed, or whatever council feels appropriate. But when you get into the regulating who can and can't live somewhere, there's a lot more legal concerns.
Anybody have any more questions or comments?
Does, because you'll have business on one side of the unit, the multifamily unit, and then business on the other side, if this is done. So behind the gas station, then you have the storage units and businesses. So you're going to trap basically residential between two businesses. Does that create problems for the business owner that's west of the apartment complex if this goes in? What he can do for setback issues? Let's say he wants to bring in oxygen storage or propane storage or something like that. Is he then forced to push back for safety residences if you put a residential in there?
So each property owner would be limited to what they're allowed to do in the business B2 zoning, so the other properties remain B2, which, if that storage unit decides to change its use and could become agriculture, equipment, sales, it could, these are all the permitted uses in the code. I won't go over all of them, a bar or a club, movie theater, drive-in, manufacturing operations, those are all permitted uses. And so somebody putting in a special use would be cognizant of what the potentials are in that area.
Well, I know we have six areas that we need to look at to approve this. Hearing the comments from the developer or that, and then the surrounding residents, I do have some concerns with the traffic generation that it would put in, and it being proposed as is, with the planning commission making their recommendations as a less dense or development. I tend to lean towards that, and these are my opinions. And it also appears that it could change the predominant character of the neighborhood. So I, those are my opinions for the record. If anybody else has a view or opinion that they would--
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, you know, in listening to potential neighbors and everything, number one, I sense, you know, no support but all resistance. Number two, just in looking at it, it looks to me like we've got some empty space, so let's put some high-density housing in here and everything. And again, to me, it looks like it would be cramped, although I understand we have to go according to code and everything. But number three, just like you're talking about, where we're talking about a business district and then putting in the high-density housing, just like you said, seeming to try and weave it in there and everything like that, I think it would change the character a bit.
So is the access would be from Sherman Street one way through and then egress on to Commerce Street? Is that what, what's being proposed, or is it just parking and in and out both ways?
I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant, but that's what was stated at planning commission was the intent.
Is access from Sherman--
An inlet off of Sherman and egress out to Commerce, so one way. You wouldn't have people turning out onto Sherman from this. If that was something council wanted to make sure was a condition, you'd have to make sure you add that because we can't necessarily hold them to that understanding unless it's--
That was just a clarification question for me, unless somebody else has a comment on that. Does council have any other questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
I have a motion by Christine Castile and a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Council action, Mr. Myers.
All right. So in section 20-3-110, it talks about special use permit. This was, an excerpt of this was provided in the memo. Specifically, the criteria for review are listed on subsection C1 through 6. Unlike a variance where all of the things must be true in a special use, you're looking at these merely to evaluate whether or not this fits generally. You're not held to a yes or no standard on any of those criteria, but it gives you an opportunity to review the general use and whether or not it's consistent with those generally. In council's action, you can deny the application, you can approve the application, or you can approve with conditions, many of which we've talked about, the various options.
I would entertain a resolution for or against.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving, recommending a conditional approval of case number 17-008 SU, a special use permit for a multifamily residential use and a B2 general business zoning district as originally proposed, subject to the following conditions: that the applicant work with the city administratively to replat the two lots, adjusting the lot lines as needed; that a site plan be submitted for review to verify compliance with all applicable codes; and that the special use runs with the land in perpetuity.
Second?
Oh, I'll second it. To bring it to a vote.
We have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution is defeated on a, we need a vote from Councilmember Howe.
Oh.
On a--
It wasn't great.
--vote of one in favor and four against.
Thanks, Kristi.
So to clarify, at this point, the motion to approve hasn't been done. Do we need a motion to not approve, or does that--
I think that--
Fails completely.
Right. I think that--
I just want to make sure council's clear and the applicant understands what the action was.
Next on the agenda is a presentation and possible action of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fort Morgan and Morgan County concerning Morgan County Emergency Operations Center. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. And first of all, I'd like to thank Jason for his assistance in putting this together. We do have a visitor from the county tonight. We have the county's best and brightest, Connor Woodall, here. So thanks for being here, Connor. This is basically just a formality, something that the county had requested that we do as part of the annexation of Legion Field. If you look at the memorandum of understanding, it essentially sets forth the intentions of the parties that the city would work in good faith with, the county, to ensure that their continued use of the property that has been annexed will allow them to conduct emergency operation activities on that property, which includes also some storage capacity within that building. So we would recommend that the council authorize the mayor to sign this memorandum of understanding. I know that in conversation or communication with the commissioners, they're fine with this memorandum of understanding and I think have agreed to move forward with it as well. It's, so it's contingent upon city council's approval, and it's staff's recommendation that we go ahead and do this to finalize the concerns that have been raised by the
Okay. This is the final aspect for--
Yes, yes. This is the--
Final, final?
This is the dot of the I and the cross of the T, I guess.
Does Connor have anything to say?
Connor, do you have anything to add?
Good answer. I would entertain a resolution.
I have a quick question. Can you give me just the elevator speech on this MOU? So--
So when we set out to annex in Legion Field, we had to get approval of the property owners, being the City of Fort Morgan, because we own a piece, the school district, they own a piece, and the county, they own a piece of the property that was annexed in. So in order for us to move forward with annexing all those properties, we had to have the consent of all of those parties. In that process, the county had a few concerns related to our zoning code as it relates to the facilities currently on their property being used as an emergency operations center. Internally, we didn't feel that it was going to be an issue. However, the county asks that we make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward in their operations and use of that property, and so we've identified them in this agreement to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Great. So it just makes nice legal sense for the relationship moving forward with it.
It makes, and I'll let Jason kind of speak to the legal aspect for it, but it demonstrates our willingness to work with the county on issues that they raise and hopes that there's a reciprocity on issues that we raise of concern that they would work with us to resolve those issues.
Great.
It more or less memorializes the understanding of today, legally, we can't bind future council's decisions on many things, much like the county, we can't bind the county commissioners on future decisions that they'll make. But this is, MOU will stand to help future councils interpret, if this issue ever does come up, what the original intent was. So that's more or less what we're going for.
Other questions? Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Fort Morgan and Morgan County concerning the Morgan County Emergency Operations Center.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
We're all in agreement.
There you go. It's done. Peas are crossed and dyes are dotted. Next, we have--
Connor's smiling. And Connor's smiling, so I guess we did it, we did it right.
Connor always smiles.
They're the best and brightest. Next on the agenda is 2018 budget calendar. We'll start with--
Well, Your Honor, we're going to start today, we're trying to do this a little bit earlier in the, in the agenda to make sure everybody's brains are in a good place, primarily mine, and so-- mine, and so we're going to start with the electric department. And we've got the venerable Douglas Linton, who will be presenting his, and you do have printed out sheets with his budget, if there are any questions. And then we're going to do a short presentation of his annual report, which is another thing that we're doing a little bit different this year, that council requested a short synopsis of what happens in his department. So, Mr. Linton.
I don't know if my brain's all there, but I'll give it a shot. Good evening. There isn't much change in my budget from last year. I'll highlight on my maintenance of lines, we're trying to meet any SC code, redoing a bunch of old undergrounds, so we just keep working in that line item for reliability purposes, safety purposes, and the customers like it when their lights stay on. The only huge change I have is in my capital, I have that transmission line and distribution underbuild. So I don't know if I'm a little ahead of the game here, but we're going to rebuild the line from the Henderson sub to the E sub, across the field to almost the XL sub. We're going to put in new steel poles, a new switch at the E sub, and a distribution underground feeder from there, from Henderson to the east. This will give us a really good backup, so if we, we can take all of our subs out and use this one feeder to feed different parts of the town. So that's the only huge thing, no equipment next year, so I think we're good on equipment for a while. There's a couple of things we need to replace probably in 19, but basically, everything stays the same this year as it was last year. So I'll entertain any questions on my budget.
Just really quick, could you kind of explain really quick the NSCC?
It's the National Electric Safety Code.
NESE, sorry.
So we got to meet clearances over roofs, off the side of houses, over buildings, trees, with communication wires. We all got to have clearances. So we've spent the last five years really aggressively changing poles out in alleys, meeting that make-ready pole, so if communications company wanted to come in, we didn't have to change out the pole right then and there. We still have a lot to do, but we're trying to meet the NESE code as best as we can. And that takes a lot of rebuilding alleys, and a lot of stuff was done fast in the past.
And now we do it right.
Now we do it right. We try to do it right.
Rules change.
Rules change.
Rules change.
And we'll be behind you.
Now, you were talking, you're rebuilding the line from the Henderson sub to the XL
Yep, that transmission line. So right now, it's four-out wire, and that's kind of the bottleneck in our whole transmission line. So we're going to upgrade that to, I think, 477, and then we're putting a 556 underbuild underneath it, so we'll have, we'll have everything the same all the way around.
Okay.
It increases capacity.
Right.
And there's, there's one line item that you'll see is the fiber network backbone that doesn't have anything in it at this point, because we are working with council and other risk management mitigation opportunities or options to determine how much more we're going to invest into the system. So right now, that's currently zero, but as we get closer to budget time, we'll have a better understanding of what that number needs to be to continue to build out the system. So that's one thing that we'll change before this gets back to you and the final gets back to you in October.
Tell us about yourself or your...
My annual report, like I said, we've been changing out poles and replacing old underground, and I guess one thing I'm proud of, probably in the last 10 years, is we've almost cut our overtime down to 50%. So being aggressive on the system, working within the budget, we've been able to, our outages are, we don't have as many as we did in the past, and that, we just set poles. So like in 2015, we set 94 poles. Last year was 110 poles, and this year, we got 60 to date, so. And the same with the conduit. Brent gives me a hard time about this one. But in 2015, we, we put in 9900 feet. Last year, we put in 22,000 feet, and this year, to date, we have 7,000 in. And there's probably another 700 feet that, when I did this report, that we put in since then, so. Underground conductor, we've been changing out all the old cable and putting in new. In 15, we did 25,000 feet. Last year, we did 29,000 feet, and so far this year, we have nine. So, and then today, 66,000 feet of fiber backbone in conduit, and maybe 20,000 feet of fiber today.
Yeah, I think we're pulling it in pretty quick.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
So where we met this morning, when I come here at 5:00, they were right in front of Precision Transmission, I think.
Wow.
So they worked their way...
No muss growing under their feet?
No, no, so it's, it's going good, it's going great.
You guys have done a great job on the fiber, I mean, all the way from Jeff to the guys working in the field and our contractors.
Thank you. It's been a fun project. There's been some trying days, but it's, it's a lot of fun. It's a learning experience for me.
It is.
So I kind of like those kind of things. It's kind of outside the box. So I guess our biggest priority is our customers, our reliability, and just system reliability and safety. That's what I base my budget off of, and if we just keep doing what we're doing, hopefully we'll be in good shape.
Good. Anybody have any questions for Douglas?
What's that?
Sorry, Doug.
No questions?
Excellent job.
Thank you. And I didn't need any new toys this, next year, so.
And thanks for letting us come out and watch today.
You bet. And if you guys want to ride along during the day, if you've got time, I'd be more than happy to show you around, to explain the transmission line a little better and show you what we're doing.
Is that the red line?
What's that? The red line. We're changing it to the blue line.
And there's air conditioning in the truck, so.
Yes.
That's an inside joke.
Well, one, one exciting thing is with this being an election year, next year, we get to do all the tours, so that would be something we could line up on the tours and just take everybody and show them the, show them the red lines.
That's an inside joke.
I'm like, we're all gone. Apparently, some of us don't get it.
Yeah, it's, it's an inside joke from a lot of years, a lot of, long time ago.
Long time. Very good.
All right, thank you.
For what you guys do.
All right, now we'll hear the budget on the municipal engineer, as well as the building department, from Mike Kirkendall. Thanks for being here tonight, Mike.
So which one's the director, just building department?
He's doing the building department and municipal engineer, public works.
Okay, on the public works one, we will have a new director. I'll let Jeff give all the bells and whistles on that, but I'll have a new boss starting in July 17th. So this is just to give him a starting line, so we just transferred what was in this year's budget into next year's budget, so that he had the ability, once he got here, to have some figures to start with, and to see whether or not he needs to adjust those or up and down, so this, this gives him the ability to hold in line what we had proposed for this year, so that he can have that to work with next year. So other than that, I'm sure, once he shows up and has a chance to look over his budget, he can determine whether it's adequate for what he has in mind, once he understands what he's, direction he's going. And as far as my budget, the building department, we've been able to now come to, and several line items were able to be reduced, because now we have the new inspectors in place. We have the code book updates that we made it through last year and this year, so those have all been in, bought and paid for. The training, that's gone down, because now we've got that worked out, the training and classes, the other inspectors had a few chances to get some training, so as you go down through there, you'll see that a lot of our stuff's been decreased, because we figured out what we needed now that we got the new person, and then we got a new vehicle, so obviously, they don't have to, the city mechanic doesn't have to Band-Aid us along. So anyway, and the only thing that really kind of went up is, we did kind of find out, because we hadn't done, I hadn't done anything for uniforms for several years, so I tried to take a cost, and we found out that when you put the fancy city logo on there, that costs too. So we had to up that a little bit, so we could get our uniforms with the city logo on it. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can on the budget.
This is a newbie question, but there's a line item for rent.
Yeah, we have to pay the electric department for the building.
No.
Brent's one of those landlords.
Thank you.
The electric department funded the building back when it was constructed, and so there's a requirement that they pay rent.
Got it, thank you.
They pay a dollar per foot of elevation, is that it? I thought that 5,280 was interesting, was an interesting number.
Well, yeah, we're trying to get to that height. We're still about 1,000 short, but we're working on it.
Is he at least a good landlord?
He's a great, I, what do you think?
He still hasn't got me my window or my second door out of my office, but other than that, he's togeth...
Sorry, Brent kind of set you up.
Do you pay on time?
Well, it's on my budget, so. Do you need my spirit paid on time? Or the fund department, make sure it gets paid on time.
I was going to say, the fund department does, huh?
Okay, so anyway, this was kind of a hybrid, so you, I kind of threw something together with Brenda's help. She put it together, I'll read what she put together, because she has all the facts and figures. So anyway, to give you an idea, last year in 15, we did 864 permits. Last year, we did 791 permits, and as of May of this year, we've done 239 permits. And one thing that we hadn't done in the past, but we started last year, is we started keeping track of when we were, to meet people on site, to discuss their projects with them, so that we didn't have to come and make friends with them after we, they started. So anyway, in 20, last year, we had 271 contacts for, with people to address their ideals of business, houses, fences, et cetera, and as of May of this year, we've had 118. Inspections, and in that, these two years had a lot of roofs. I know I've been on a lot of them, but that's why they're really high. But 2015, we had 1,654 inspections, and 2016, we had 1,504. And then as of this year, of May, we had 503. And then contractor registration, 2015, we had 302, last year, 304, and as May of this year, we had 191. And that's contractor registration, as we make sure that they register. If they're electricians and plumbers, then we have to get their state credentials and their contractor's license on record, and then show that they have liability insurance. Then all other contractors have to register and show that they have liability insurance. So then, some of the highlights, some of the projects we've done last year and to date is, we, the past two years, we did the Bass Western Hotel, which, that one there is a lot more inspections than it took. Sometimes it'd be there twice a day, morning, afternoon, depending on what floor they're at, whatever they were, so that was high one. Then we had, did O'Reilly's Auto, Daylight Donuts Baja Tacos, which now Baja Tacos is the Papa Murphy's Pizza, so that was changed, and then remodeled and changed again, so. And then, then we did the Mustang Convenience Store remodel, which added on to Godfather's Pizza, so they did a little addition. We did the kitchen, had to do ovens and stuff to meet Godfather's standards, so. So we did that one. Then we did the remodel to the Maverick Restaurant, which they call it the Mav, something, something now, but they put it, blew out the whole east end and built up, and if you guys haven't went out there, it's quite a bit of work on the east end of the, that building, where they have a mezzanine and, and stuff. And the bar got moved to the east side. Then we, we did the Maverick gas station, added an RV gas station part, so it was basically, so trucks and RVs could get underneath the canopy and not have to try to fight underneath where the gas people, so that was added on to the north east side of the property. And then, then we did an addition over there for Mr. Laws on Wakefield. He added on to the, the north end of his building, so there is, from there. And then we've done five new houses, single-family houses for the Colorado Housing Authority, so there's four over in that side of town, one over on this side of town, so they're kind of homeowners helping to build their own homes. So there's, did five of those. And then we've worked with the Fairfield people, so they're under a permit, so they're, they'll be starting there, they got the permit, they can start doing whatever, they're doing groundwork and whatever out there now, so that'll be another four-story hotel that'll be, be getting wound up here in the next few months. And then we've also been working with, kind of a combined of two different businesses that they just added on to, which now is called Tail Pipes and T-Bones Restaurants, which is the restaurant down there on the 1200 block of West Platte. So they've expanded into the gas station part, so they had more seating area, so that was, worked with them. And then we're working with, and I'll say this wrong, but, so please, excuse me, Elrich's, so it'd be Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealership building, which is down there where the Toyota dealership and McDonald's is, so they're, as you can tell, they've done dirt work and started doing stuff there, so they're real close to getting the building permit. They, there's a few things they have to correct, but right now, they're working on bringing the ground level up to level and a retaining wall, and then the building permit will be coming shortly. And then we've been working with the lady with the, the new childcare center that you've approved over on the corner of Linda and Beaver, and so we're working with them to get their building plans, what they need to send in for building plans and site plans for the building permit process. So sounds like we'll, we'll at least have some hotels and couple of commercial buildings to do here in the next few months.
They'll be busy.
So can you give us a list of all your residential things you've dealt with?
I was going to say, do you really have the time?
No.
He didn't even bat an eyelash at that. He was ready to...
Thanks, Mike. Good job.
It's like I'm out of here.
Now we'll jump to utility billing.
Part of the fund group.
Part of the fund group, yes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Utility billing provides customer service while ensuring compliance to tariffs, ordinance, and accounting procedures for billing electric, gas, water, wastewater, and sanitation customers. This department reads approximately 16,000 meters every month, calculates 7,400 bills, and provides collection for delinquent accounts through approximately 2,000 reminder notices and several small claims courts monthly. In our budget, you'll see that we have decreased in most of our areas, some have stayed the same. The only one that I think has increased any is the credit card expense, but we're increasing our online payments. Our 2018 goals that we're working on now, or plan to start with completion in 2018, we're planning on going completely paperless, and in doing that, we started in January. we're planning on going completely paperless, and in doing that, we started in January. In utility billing, we have reports that are well over a thousand pages every single month, and we print those out and we put them on a shelf. A lot of times, they aren't used again, so we're now saving them electronically. We got rid of the shelves, and in the place of the shelves is a digital sign, which now provides current information for our customers, when we're closed, where our drop boxes are, the concerts in the park, anything that we can think of that will help our customers, so we provided that for them. And it makes the, it really opens up the department and makes it look more modern inside. So you'll have to come by and see our new sign. In going paperless, we are decreasing our supplies, we were going through two cases of paper a month, now we're down to one, sometimes we'll go a case per month and a half, so we hope to increase saving on that. In postage, we decreased, we're CAS certified now, with every software change, we had to start over again, and CAS means it's the Correct Address Service System, and it's the ZIP plus four. Well, we're going to go to the next level where we'll be able to actually get it down to the mailing route, and that will save us more postage, so in working with that, we are decreasing our postage. And we would also start combining tenants' utility bills, currently they get two bills, one is the electric and gas bill, the other is water, sewer, and trash. And this was because the old software didn't allow us to look at each service individually, it was either the whole bill, or you couldn't do it. And also, there was a Colorado revised state statute that we kept water, sewer, and trash separate, so if you were a tenant, you received two bills. If you didn't pay on time, you received two reminder notices, your landlord receives two notices. So in combining these, it's a domino effect, we'll just have one bill for the tenant, one for the, one notice for the landlord that you didn't pay, and one reminder notice for you, so that will save in postage also. We continue to believe that education is important in our department. Our staff will complete their personal development certification and start on Business Essentials Certification, so we are working on those also. Last year, we did the customer service certification. Any questions?
I do have a question, you talked about landlords and the billing. Our, our house in particular, we have two meters, we have one on the house, and we have one on the garage, is there a way to combine those so they don't come separate?
The only problem with that is your service, your consumption is also added together, so it'd be difficult to determine how much you used in the garage and how much you used in the house.
Two separate meters.
Yeah, I always bring back my extra envelope.
That's okay, we reuse them, we save money. Anything else? Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
I heard some innovation happening in that department.
Yes, a lot of innovation in the city.
Can we see your sign if we go to the drive-up window?
No, it's on the car wall.
So I'll have to walk in?
Please come visit us.
Very good, now we are to inventory control.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Doug Hoffman, Inventory Control. My budget's pretty much straightforward, slight little decreases across most of the board there, so it amounts to a little over $500 on the expense line, so any questions on the budget?
Yours is pretty straightforward, isn't it?
They give me the money, I spend it for them, so I don't have much.
He gets his own supplies.
You do a good job at it.
And basically, that's, that's our goal. Centralized purchasing agent, improving efficiencies, get better pricing, so.
Absolutely.
Just a few little comparisons, last year I tried to track special requests and stuff like that, so somebody wanted an office chair, that they sent me as a request with, you know, say a model number or something like that, that they found was like 199, so I checked some other, other places and shopped around and, and got it for 150, so, and just different things like that, that I've tracked on special requests, and, and that comes through authorizations that they, that they give me to spend their money.
Good job.
March 7th, we actually, we cleared the million-dollar mark in inventory, so we had a huge projects going on with fiber, electric projects, you know, just normal, huge maintenance items, water projects, so we were bulging, so. So it's, it's coming down a little bit, in fact, since I gave you these numbers, it was at 992 there in, in June 13th, well, since that time, we have issued another $100,000 of material since June 13th that has gone out of the warehouse.
Wow.
So we've been busy, so. Can I answer any other questions?
Well, they start putting that fiber in the ground like they did today, you'll be dropping your inventory on that pretty quick. Good job, thank you very much for centralizing it.
Only way to do it.
All right, so Brent's gonna come up and fill in for Sam on the maintenance budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Sam.
Yes, I am Sam tonight. I'm temporarily filling in for Sam's boss until we get his new boss here in a couple of weeks. Sam's budget, pretty straightforward, he did request a couple of line items be upped a little bit, you'll see underneath his equipment, he's wanting, or needing, he said, he's gonna need another set of drills and stuff, something he uses a lot, so he upped his tools and equipment line item by $500 there for that. And then his large jump was down in his maintenance general property, his HVAC system is on the verge of wanting to die on him. He spent some money and got it kinda fixed up and hoping to get it through the rest of this year, but he wants to go ahead and replace that system that's in there, it's quite old, and everybody that's looked at it has told him that sometime, probably within a year, it'll need to be replaced, so he went out himself and got estimates from a bunch of different contractors, and we figured out $3,500 would be enough to cover what he wants to do with that system next year, so that's why that line item was increased for him. So, any questions on his budget? He's another one that's very good at spending everybody else's money, as he fixes things in different departments, he writes it off towards their, their line items.
You charge him rent, too? No.
No, I was gonna say, he doesn't charge him rent.
No, I don't charge him rent, he works under the electric fund already. So, yeah, and I think just general, we've, just for the last couple of years, just started tracking, we have an electronic work order system that we're using, I went and pulled those statistics you see in the report, I think it's a lot easier for the employees to have that access, Sam is very good about responding to it, and, I mean, he's a one-man shop, and he's traveling all over between the airport, and water plant, wastewater plant, all the facilities we have here in town, and he's very good about trying to respond, you know, that day, and trying to at least schedule when things will need to get fixed. He's very good about not getting in over his head, bringing in extra help when it's needed on some specialty items and everything, so Sam's doing a good job and seems to be staying up on getting everything repaired, except for the light bulbs in my office right now, but.
Does he get hazard pay for the strange odors?
What's that?
I said, does he get hazard pays? I like that last.
Oh, yeah, I, I, right now, since I'm a supervisor, I get the request as they come through, and that one came through when I was doing this report, that one of the buildings was complaining about a strange odor in the building and wanted to come check it out, so I typed that into the report form.
Was it on the north end of town?
So, no, it wasn't, it was over on the east end of the town.
Well, he wanted to leave because his HVAC he needed to-
Yeah.
So, he wanted to go to the other department, it's cooler.
Yes.
So that kinda reminds me of the joke, how many supervisors does it take to change the light bulb?
Yeah.
And just somebody to put in the work order to Sam, huh?
Yep.
That's right.
Sam's like, get somebody from the electric department.
Well, they didn't get changed today, because he's, he's on vacation, so.
I bet you could go to Doug, get the light bulb.
Probably.
Oh, he's doing something right, he made employee of the quarter, so, short period of time, he's, he's done a pretty decent job.
Definitely.
Tell him to come visit us someday.
Okay. Thing else on that?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just slide into my utility director budget. No major changes here, I did make some adjustments on fuel and oil, I adjusted that down now that I've kinda got a feel for all of my travel miles and everything, so I made some adjustments more in line with what it looks like I'll be spending this year. I had the Capital line item picked up this last year, but nothing like that this year, so what you see in front of you is pretty straightforward with what I need to do my job. I'm happy to answer any questions on those numbers.
Pay rent to yourself?
What's that?
You pay rent?
No, I do not.
You see a theme here, right?
Yes.
It's good to be king.
Apparently.
Very straightforward.
So, and then my report, I didn't, didn't throw a bunch of statistics at you guys, I mean, my job is a lot of meeting attendance and, and staying up on where we are, you know, with regulatory issues and working with consultants and things like that. I get involved at some level with all the different projects like Mike was describing, but these are kinda the core things that I have on my plate every month, that I'm going to and representing the city or the county in some cases, so I do find myself putting a lot of miles on that vehicle, but I do enjoy that, I think we do get a lot of benefit out of it as a city, we do get a lot of exposure for us as a community with a lot of these organizations that I go to and belong to, and so, but I think, big picture wise, last year, the, the two big projects that I was involved with that I was kinda most proud of, is we finally got the golf course project up and running, we're waiting to turn the water in probably next week and start using it for the rest of the summer, I was really happy to see that project finally get done, and then my involvement with the fiber project is the other, the big one that I love being in the middle of, because just like today, that was, that was very monumental and a lot of fun to see that finally getting put into the ground and everything, so it'll be even better next year when we can hopefully be able to light it up next year and be able to start serving people with our systems, so.
You know, there's, there's another benefit to the travel that you, you see from time to time with the various directors and going to various conferences and being associated with different organizations, and that, that's the knowledge that they bring back with them as well. We're recognized considerably in a lot of different professional areas, and one of the things that I've noticed that we've been able to do from an innovative perspective, an innovation perspective, is get ideas from other people. And so there's, there's also a huge benefit of education that comes along with being able to see how other people are doing things and what works and what doesn't, and so a lot of that time not only benefits the city from our reputation perspective and Brent's representation of the city and other directors' representation of the city, but what we also learn in those visits, so appreciate his time and effort in doing that.
Makes it easy when you have competent staff, works with you, doesn't it?
Absolutely, so, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're going to have a rare privilege of seeing the man behind the green wall.
Mr. Oz, the wizard?
Come out and-
Come out, wizard.
Tell us a little bit about his budget.
He's dropping our conversation. How creepy.
Can we forget that he's there, quite honestly, we're talking here. Nobody else may hear something, but we know Nelson hears everything.
He's not easily offended, so that's a good thing.
So, you've seen the packet and my plans for the future, my budget is lower than it was in 2016, or, yeah, lower than it was in 2016, and I think lower than it was in for 2017, too, so. We're not replacing any computers next year, we are gonna replace some servers, we have some rotating rust that's getting pretty old, we have some machines that are approaching about six years old now, so it's time for some of them to be replaced, they're in mission critical positions. I think that's pretty much about it. We are, we are gonna ask for a new vehicle this year, we have a 2003 Chevy Blazer that leaks oil like a sieve, so, I know we're gonna work on that at some point, getting that into the budget at some point, so I'm sure you'll, you'll see that at some point in the future. Does anyone have any questions, or?
Straightforward.
Okay. I guess about our department, you know, we, we, I, I think we try to embrace the DIY spirit of Fort Morgan, we're very much a do-it-yourself department, if we can do things effectively on, on the cheap, we do. You know, the digital signage system that Connie had just mentioned, that's built off of a $50 Raspberry Pi PC, it's no bigger than a credit card, those little things are a miracle, but I do all the coding and scripting for that, and there's a lot going on in the background for things like that, you know, the work order system that the city attorney's office uses, we use, and the building maintenance department use, it was, it was a free system that we implemented on, on a SQL backend, you know, we run a lot of open source software, a lot of Linux, BSD, Unix, acronyms, 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 sorry, I won't try to-
They're all going.
I'm trying not to, I'm trying not to.
I'm following you.
But, you know, we, I, I get a chance to flex my creative muscle here, and, you know, that's one of the reasons I love this job, I get to do really cool stuff, Jeff kinda gives me the opportunity to learn and grow and implement and bring great things to, to the city, and, you know, that's, it's, it's really cool. And, you know, honestly, though, all of it, I couldn't do any of it without Carlos, my, my assistant Carlos Garcia, he takes care of the day-to-day stuff and, and, you know, works with me on, on some of the bigger projects, his assistant is, assistance is incredibly invaluable. I will say, I do have one statistic, we closed 372 work orders from 365 days ago today, we closed 365, or 372 work orders, sorry. So, we, we try to take care of people as much as, as we can, we're not mind readers, but when people tell us there's a problem, it gets fixed as quickly as humanly possible, so.
They're probably very similar to the odor ones, too.
What's that?
I mean, like Brent was talking about, you get random weird-
We get some fun ones, we get some fun ones, but, you know.
It's making a weird noise.
We get some really fun ones every once in a great while, but, you know, it's-
What'd you do, wasn't me?
Did I turn it on?
Well, our default response is, is of course, the, that, the IT guy's TV show, the British TV show, have you tried turning it off and turning it back on, that's our default response, so.
So Nelson, you know, I was really hoping that you would use Tarball at some point in your presentation, so could you use it in context, so we can at least hear it?
In an IT context? I, I built an Elk stack today.
An Elk stack?
Yeah.
There you go.
And that doesn't have anything to do with-
Elastosearch log stash in Kaivana.
Yeah.
It's called an Elk stack.
An Elk stack, but no Tarballs in that?
No, they're all RPM files, so all I do is yum and then install.
And they're all thinking that, for the record, they're all expecting Raspberry Pi.
Oh, yeah.
And they're thinking of it in terms of with a fork, so.
I'm thinking elk hunting.
Nelson, under your-
On cow, right.
Under your future projects for next year, you have GIS on there, so I know we've kinda been talking about that off and on, so can you just fill me in on what that looks like?
Well, I, I know we're gonna hire an employee, we're having a third-party build the database for it, they've got- They've got a lot of data to sort through, and it's just something that we, as much as we love doing things in-house, we're not going to be able to. This is one of those things I, we're going to have to turn over. But the people that we've looked at to do this are incredibly competent. And so what they're going to do is they're going to build us the initial database, and then we'll hire somebody to come in and maintain the database.
Cool. So it'll happen. It's going to happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be a big deal. And it's going to make everyone's lives, I think, especially in the utility departments, it's going to make everyone's lives a lot easier, a lot more efficient. We'll be able to get things done quicker. And, you know, I mean, information really is the currency of the 21st century. And the more information we can get out there, the better. So having someone dedicated to providing information to people who don't want to have to go back to their office to get that information, they could just call up and get that information on site, I think will be incredibly beneficial to everyone.
So how excited are you about the fiber project?
I think it's cool. I want to be customer number one. I know you guys tried to call it, but I have dibs.
And he has ways of making his dibs.
I called shotgun like a year ago, so.
I think you can make that happen. Maybe he'll come help me with the light bulb.
I'll turn his power off.
Guard Jim Ryan.
That's the next question. Do you charge him rent, too?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we live out in the nerd cave.
Well, I figured that he was going to charge right there, too.
It's only the main complex.
I know. I'm just going to nudge Brett every chance I get.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
Now he's going to run back.
Keep up the good work.
So you can zoom in on whoever's up there. Was the camera on you?
It was.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Normally, he does
Yeah, when we watch it, we're going to see the window or something.
All right. Now we get to hear from Tony. And I will tell you
Anthony.
What's that?
We're going to call him Nicholas. You've got to call him Anthony.
Tony, are you good with that?
I've been called worse.
Well, we won't call you any bad words today, but I will say this about Tony. He does an exceptional job of looking at the very fine details in his budget. I'd never have to worry about nearly all of the managers and what's going on. But with Tony, he takes it very serious and does a really good job in really narrowing down, comes to budget meetings and asks questions that are really good questions and makes sure that he understands what's going on. And some of the aspects of his budget are pretty difficult when it comes to budgeting for the gas department and purchasing the gas, because there's a lot to what they do that Tony's responsible for in that department that the guys that are, you know, maintaining the system aren't responsible for. So he's got a really big job, and he does a really good job at taking care of that big job. So I'll turn over to Anthony to
Who's that?
To Tony and have him go over his report and his budget.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, council?
Aye.
My budget hasn't changed. Pretty simple. No capitals. The numbers are pretty much same as they always have been. I've got a fictitious purchase gas number right now, because we will be looking at rates this year. Because we're going to be getting out of a program that we are in right currently at the end of August with MBGA that will affect the rates. So that number isn't a true number. I've just got it in there. So that possibly, we're hoping it'll be a lower number on our purchase gas. But we'll know more towards the end, when we're getting towards the final budget. Any questions on the budget?
No, everything that's been put in so far has been a little below or very well explained.
The PUC fees, you'd think after all these years I would have asked what that is.
Public Utilities Commission. That is my big boss. They make sure I'm complying with all their federal regulations.
And so we pay them? We pay them? I guess I don't understand what we
We pay them for the rights.
Because they tell us we have to pay them?
Sorry, I missed that.
No, I said we, it's something we have to pay them?
Yes.
Okay.
It's like taxes.
Yeah, it's a fee, yeah. It helps to keep them guys supported also, because they're federally regulated. They're just our state police. They're regulated with the feds.
Perfect.
And yes, I do pay rent.
A whole lot of rent, too, I see. Now, what do you think of your light bulb? He's okay?
Yeah, he's all right.
Just comply with the Fair Housing Act.
Make him come put your light bulbs in.
Oh, we'll do it ourselves. It's easier.
Because we're not sure, because we're not sure he knows how to put a light bulb in.
Your rent hasn't been raised in a while, I take it, from that comment.
Good call.
So any other questions on my budget?
No, they're pretty straightforward.
Okay. I submitted my annual report from last year comparing my 2015 numbers to the 2016 numbers. And is there any questions on that? It was pretty much straightforward, I believe. As of the date, we've got all of our valve maintenance completed. We're about halfway through with our leak survey in our portion of town that we have planned to do this year. And if time allows, we will continue to go maybe even farther. We've got 2,500, put a two-inch main installed already this year. On the books right now, we've got 1,500 more feet that is called out for. And we've got eight services signed up so far as of today to be installed this year also. And we've been working diligently with the fiber guys, with all of our line inspections, with their potholing and their crossings. And the guys, the crews that you guys have hired, or that Advance has hired, they've been very good to work with. They hold off, they understand the severity of knocking coating off or hitting a gas line, so they are very aware. And they will, if we're not around, they will call us. And we're getting close, can you get somebody? And we'll get out there. So we're not slowing them guys down either.
So on your deal here, you've got the four-ounce lines installed. Is that upgrading what McFadden was talking about?
No, the four-ounce line, that's the, it's a customer-owned line. It's a line after the meter that would technically sometimes go to a garage. Somebody builds a garage, a detached garage, and they want to put heat in that detached garage. We call that a four-ounce line because it's going after the meter. It's the pressure that's after the meter. But it's a customer-owned line. But through our codes, we are required to install any underground lines because we are mandated by PUC to maintain it with locating and leak surveying it. So we've just got it in the code, any underground gas will be installed by PUC.
Okay. I have one. I thought it was them.
Yes.
You guys do a lot of line locates. Will the GIS project help decrease that? Or it's still a manual effort?
But the numbers won't go down.
Yeah.
They still need to call 811 when they're doing any kind of
Before your dick.
Call before you dig.
Anything.
Even a vegetable garden.
Even a vegetable garden.
Very good.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tony.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
That brings us to the to Bob, yeah. Robert, to Robert Evans.
For being very
Now present the sanitation budget.
Evening, mayor, council.
Aye.
My budget's pretty plain and simple again. Got one, one major item that we're doing is we're going to contract out to have concrete pads installed in the rest of the town and the residential. We just don't have the equipment and the time to get it done. So it's a $57,000 project. Other than that, it's, the budget's about the same.
And could you kind of detail with that project how that's going to work?
It's based on per block. It's about $760 per block to do. And I think there's 65, 67 blocks to do. Around 300 concrete pads, and the pads are $150 apiece. And then, of course, contract labor is, I think, $60 an hour with a minimum of three hours per block, which I think they probably do faster than that, but.
We have the concrete pads?
Huh?
We have the concrete pads?
We have some of them, but we're having some made, too. We have like 58 in stock and Green, our Green Brothers, has somewhere around 80.
So are you going to reuse what's in the field already currently?
Yeah.
Are they going to reset those?
Yeah, we're going to use what we have, yeah. Absolutely.
But if there's one already out there, and there's a pad and there's a dumpster on it, will they go and re-level it and reset it, make sure that it's
Oh, it should be good, but yeah, if it's, if it, for some reason, it's not sitting right, then they can absolutely re-level it. But they should be all right once they're set. They don't tend to, you know, get off kilter.
And he does not pay rent?
No, he does not.
No rent.
He pays the county.
Yeah, pay the county a lot. So is there any other questions on the budget, or?
No, it's like everyone else. They're pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I put a few numbers together for some of the projects we do. Our biggest one is the spring cleanup. And of course, if it wasn't for the street department, we wouldn't be able to make that a success. So kudos to them. But in 2014, in the spring cleanup, they hauled 68 tons at a cost of about $2,100 bucks, 88 trips, and 194 mattresses. That's low. In 2015, it jumped up to about 87 tons, $2,800 bucks, 112 trips, 345 mattresses. Which is a big jump.
So do you do special pickups for those in charge for those? Or are those just, you go pick them up out of the alley and home?
We, it's a constant thing that we got to pick up. The landfill does charge us $2 per mattress and $2 per box spring because there's such a volume of them going out there that they have to deal with them. So it's increased the rate a little bit.
Do you do a special pickup and find out where they came from and
If we can find out where they came from, yeah, absolutely.
Are they not allowed in part, as part of the spring cleanup?
No, they are.
Spring cleanup.
Oh, but the rest of the year, when?
They've got the rest of the year that they need to done.
Well, and if they can, you know, break them up and make them fit in the trash can, it makes it a lot easier. It's when they start stacking them up against fences and or people's houses, you know. And that's illegal.
Mattresses don't stay folded very well.
No.
No.
I don't imagine they cut up very well either. I can't imagine.
Yeah, you get some
Salzo?
Salzo, heavy, you know, wire cutters. Torch.
Yeah. We encourage people, if they fit in the dumpster, put it in the dumpster. It's a lot easier to get rid of. Then in 2016, in the cleanup, it was nearly 99 tons. So it's, each year it's increasing more and more. About $3,257 bucks, 116 trips. There's 350 mattresses, so we went up by five. And then this year, we did 92 tons, 3,751, 150 trips, and 360 mattresses. So there's a lot of mattresses. And plus, before they even start the spring cleanup, we go through and clean up the whole town. So there's a lot more tonnage on here that could be in here that isn't. So that's
And for spring cleanup, the parks goes in ahead of you and shreds or
They do.
Chips all the branches and yard waste, right?
They do. And then I got some numbers, total numbers for the entire year for 2014. We hauled, or 9,182 tons is what we hauled. At a cost of about $286,000 and 2,200 trips. And then in 2015, we hauled 9,232 tons of trash at 301,000. And it was just under 2,200 trips. Then in 2016, last year, was 9,748 tons of trash at 325,000 and 2,042 trips.
So you hauled more tonnage in 2016 with less trips.
Yeah, which is kind of weird. Must have been a lot of light leaves that year or something.
Do we anticipate any increases in tipping fees?
Not this year so far. We haven't received anything.
Yet, so hopefully it stays the same.
No more mattresses.
I wish.
We all have to keep our mattresses.
No, that's, that's about what I got.
And I think that concludes our budget presentations tonight. I want to thank everybody for being here and presenting and doing a good job in managing your department's budgets. And thank council for your time and attention to these important details.
Thanks to all of you. You do a fantastic job on the budgeting and customer service and what you do for the city. Couldn't run without you guys. You make our job fun.
And you make less phone calls, so we appreciate that.
So next, we have a presentation and action on a request for in-kind services and fee waivers for Morgan County Fair. Ms. Stefan, she should have been able to present her budget tonight since she had to wait.
I was here, you're right.
I know. Efficiency, huh?
Probably be more fees to waive then, so that'll work out. The Morgan County Fair Board has requested in-kind services and the waiving of fees associated with the Morgan County Fair. The fees for this event include 30 picnic tables for 15 days and the damaged deposits for those tables and the Showmobile for a weekend rental and that Showmobile deposit. So that comes to $5,000, $5,500. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them. Or, as was pointed out early, Connor Woodall is here, and I'm sure he would be happy to answer your questions.
I think we should ask him a question because he's here.
We're going to need to keep your deposit? Me, too.
You know, normally, in these circumstances, I make sure, same thing. When we rent out tables, the renter picks them up. Is the county planning on coming to pick them up and deliver them back? Very good.
Good answer.
Very good.
And what do they use the
Showmobile?
Yes, Showmobile for.
You have to come up to the
Thanks, Connor.
Good job.
The Showmobile's going to be for the night after the steak fry. It's going to be August 8th, 7:30 to 9:30. We're having the Tyler Walker Band come in, and they're going to play. They're going to be set up right there in the outdoor arena, and it should be a nice area for it, so.
Thanks.
Fort Morgan, right in the middle of the fair rent.
So are you going to report back to the commissioners on all that happens tonight?
Yes, I will.
Oh, good. You should stick around till the end.
Yeah, definitely. They would want to hear that, too.
I have a message for Mr. Swedzik.
He may not be delivering that.
I'll deliver it. Okay, I would entertain a resolution?
Your honor, I offer a resolution to approve the request for in-kind services and fee waivers for the Morgan County Fair in the amount of $5,500.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Presentation and possible action on bids for 115 KV transmission line material for the electric Hartman Douglas.
Sorry, Doug.
Thanks again.
I've heard us call you that.
I planted the seed a little bit earlier about the 115 KV transmission line. It's one, it's one project with three pieces to the bid. So basically, we're taking the steel poles, replacing them from behind Walmart to the E-sub over that field close to our XL sub. So all those steel poles will come out. New steel poles will be added. At our E-sub station, there's no switch there, so we had to, we're buying a switch. It'll be a three-way switch, so one be a three-way switch, so one, one arm will open up the substation and kill it. We can switch it either way. If we have troubles on our loop, we can switch it one way or the other, keep the transmission line going.
Cool.
And then, we add a little fiber to that also. So we're putting in a static fiber from the Henderson sub over to the XL sub. And we already have conduit in the ground there, so we can just tie it all in right there. Another loop for what we're doing now. So with that being said, on my material, looks like we went off for bid on, bid openings were June ninth. We had bids submitted from border states, Peak Substation, Erby, Western United Electric, Dutton, Lansing, Wesco, and Graybar. We went through and put the bid tabulation together. We come up with two recommendations. Western United for two thirty-two, three eighty-three fifteen, and that's the, that's the bulk of the transmission line material. Erby was twenty-four, three eighty-four, eighty-nine, and most of that's the fiber part of that on that. So I'm asking staff to, or council for approval to approve those two bids. Is there any questions on that before I move to the switch?
I would entertain a resolution if there's no questions on it.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to accept the bid from Western United in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two dollars and... Two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Three hundred and eighty. No, that's a whole mess. We'll start over two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents, and to accept the bid from Erby in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents for materials set forth for the... Second? I haven't given up on that. You're welcome. Thank you.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto, and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That was pretty painful.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation, possible action on a bid for a three-way switch for the electric department.
So the switch, as I explained, it's three ways open, so, and we can switch around.
Careful.
About how to crash. With, with that being said, there was, Wesco was a bidder, Western United actually bid on three switches, Stewart Derby, one, Graybar, and Southern States. I didn't take the lowest bid, frankly, because it didn't meet, Western United's forty-seven thousand didn't meet specs, and Graybar's didn't. I had to go with the Seco switch from Western United. And basically, the difference is, it's a basic insulation level, so I have, that switch has to be rated for elevation. So with lightning, we're closer to the sky, I guess, so we had to go with the higher BIL on our switch. So I'm asking for approval from Western United on the Seco switch for forty-eight thousand, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay. Any questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Western United in the amount of forty-eight thousand and twenty-eight...
Boy, it's coming down this direction.
I know. Forty-eight thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for a three-way switch. I need some coaching from the fund department.
I, I'm getting confused with these numbers, with our resolutions. I'm having difficulty understanding what we're voting for.
Stop. Stop it.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Can I ask, oh, I'm sorry, not time yet. Go ahead. I have a question on this one, but I should let you introduce it first.
That would be nice.
Hey, hey.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on bids for steel poles for the electric department.
Okay. Okay, once again, this, this was a huge one. This is, there's a lot of engineering that went into these steel poles, and along with Doug Hoffman's help, there was several vendors that, that bid on these poles. A lot of them didn't meet specifications. They're like Peak Substation, Stewart Derby, Western Utility, Western United, Western United, Chris Davis, Dutton, Lansing, National Pole, National Pole, Klute, McQuain Poles in Roanoke.
Wow.
So we had to take this bid package and send it back to our engineer so he could look at the specifications on these steel poles. And after that was all said and done, he recommended, recommended these Valmont poles from Western United for two oh six, two eighty-six, thirty. But I'm asking for two hundred and thirty thousand in the event that during the building process or before these are built, that everything is where it needs to be as far as our switches go and where our under, our underbuild goes, that these poles have to be precise because they're steel poles and you can't change it once they're built. So I'm asking for a little extra cushion there in case there's some additional changes that we need to make to the steel poles. Okay.
The vendors submitted four hundred and forty pages of specs for these poles.
Yikes.
Wow.
And it was actually only two vendors that met those, that did that requirement. So the engineer did a lot of work and review it to make sure that these are what they need to be.
And this is also part of our ten-year master plan that we did in two thousand twelve, so we're actually using the master plan. So this will be number five out of the twelve items that we've had done in our master plan.
So my question is, what do, because we're replacing poles?
Right.
And they're also steel poles?
Yes.
So what do we do with those poles? Do they go to the landfill?
Well, we, we probably won't. We'll bring them back. I don't know if there's a recycle place that we could take those poles, but...
Cut them up for firewood.
That's their metal.
You can put a light on them in your front yard.
I mean, they, they, so they can't, so somebody else couldn't...
No, the reason we're replacing these poles to begin with is we went back and tried to find old records on those steel poles and see what the structure strength of those poles were, and maybe we, we thought maybe we could use those poles, but we couldn't find any past information on those poles. No pole stamps, no years built, made, no information, so we have to replace those poles just to make sure that we're doing it right the first time.
Okay.
But I don't know.
I thought maybe we could sell them.
Um, you know, maybe some reuse for some football lighting, or, I don't know. I'm, I'm sure there's some use for them. If somebody wanted a light in their front yard, it's really hot.
We'd like that, right?
Whoa, that's a long way up there. If you put it up in my front yard, I could use it for a flagpole.
Yeah, we could do that.
I'd be able to see it from my house.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving and accepting the bid from Western Utility Electric Valmont in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty cents for steel poles, and approval to expend up to twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the event of modifications or adjustments that may be needed. Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
They'll just raise the rent.
Next, we have an update on street tax, sales tax initiative. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The last time we spoke about this, I went over the results of the survey from the party in the park and the fact that we'd received a few names of volunteers to serve on this committee. We kind of recruited from among those people and had difficulty reaching some of them and found some of them out of town on vacation, but we held our first committee meeting anyway, and although the attendance was light, we did learn a few important things. One was the reinforcement of the idea of including alleys in this street sales tax initiative. Many people brought that up during the survey, and it seemed to be supported also at the first meeting, so that's something that we will look at as we work toward developing the actual ballot language. The second thing we learned also has to do with the language on the ballot question. We discovered that some people are, I don't want to say suspicious, but concerned that the revenue from the proposed sales tax increase, if it is ultimately decided by the council to place that on the ballot, might be diverted to other uses besides street sales tax. I, I saw some of this in my research on successful sales tax measures in other communities. There was an interview with a man in Canyon City which succeeded in passing one of these, and he said he felt the streets were terrible and something needed to be done, but he didn't believe the city would spend all the money on streets, so he wouldn't vote for it. So, you know, we know that we have to be very specific in the ballot language about that, and also, it will be a key part of our education and outreach efforts over the next couple, couple of months. So we're considering a, kind of a name or a theme for the initiative along the lines of strictly streets or something that conveys that certainty that the revenue will only be used for that purpose. And finally, we learned that we probably need to broaden our recruitment efforts for citizens to participate in promoting and advocating, advocating for this proposal. If it's placed on the ballot, we've submitted it, or will tomorrow, probably a guest column to the Fort Morgan Times outlining the initiative and seeking participants, and we'll also be trying to make direct contact with some people that we feel would be, could be helpful. And we're also more than open to suggestion, if the council has any, on people that might be approached for that purpose. In the meantime, I would ask that anybody who believes that a sales tax increase for streets is a good idea and would be willing to help with advocacy for that, please contact me at five four two three nine six three, or john.brennan@cityoffortmorgan.com. And also, please contact me even if you think it's a bad idea, so that we can learn about the reasons for that.
Good.
Thanks, John.
Thanks for your help, John. Next, we have public comment and audience participation. Did you hang around to talk to us, Chris?
Hi.
Did you hang around to talk to us?
Nope.
Okay. See?
Boy, your life is really boring, sweetheart.
No, for our entertainment, not your...
Next, our reports by officials and staff.
Yeah, I have several items to go over, and we may have some other reports from other directors. I want to, I'm happy to report that we have filled our two empty positions on the director level. We have Stephen Glamire, who is soon to be the former Public Works and Utilities Director for the City of Delta, Colorado, coming to start here on July seventeenth. Him and his wife are in town over the weekend. We met and discussed things as they were looking for houses, and they've got a couple of offers in on houses and are hoping to get things wrapped up in Delta here shortly and head over. They're very excited. We also had a final acceptance by Susan Kirk, who is the HR Director for the City of Glenwood Springs, or soon to be former HR Director for the City of Glenwood Springs, and comes with a lot of experience in a lot of different ways, working with companies that, a lot of companies in the tech industry, and developing innovative ideas and, and working in, in the innovation, I guess, realm, as well as a lot of years of experience in government and government HR activities, background in healthcare benefits and other things that are, that'll be helpful for what we do here at the City of Fort Morgan. Very nice person and very excited for her to get started as well. So if you are worried, worry no more. We've got the positions filled. The other thing is, you may have been receiving some complaints. I know I've been receiving a lot of complaints with regard to the odoriferous emanations from a certain neighbor to the city. And we're trying to figure out how to address that. I know several community members have called the Department of Health and lodged complaints. Many citizens are calling the hotline that is provided by the plant, and still, we do not see a lot of, you know, I guess, changes. Unless there's a change in the wind, you kind of are stuck with what you got. And we're doing all that we can. And I guess that's, that's the message I want to let the citizens know. We're doing all we can as the City of Fort Morgan. It is located in the county. County commissioners have jurisdiction over that. Obviously, the state has jurisdiction over that. We do not. We have very limited jurisdiction on what we can do with regard to the smell, and I know that it's terrible, and I know that people are suffering and struggling with that. It's affecting us in a lot of negative ways, and I know that the plant is well aware that it's an issue. Not sure everything that they can do to fix that, but we're working with them as best that we can on every level that we can to try and figure out what we can do to make that better. So with that, I just want the public to know that we're aware of it. There are phone numbers that you can call to make complaints to, to the organizations that have jurisdiction over the operations at the plant, and obviously, we're, we're doing everything that we can on our end. I know that there's mixed feelings out there, that there's, you know, this is a, an agricultural plant, and it was there first. I totally understand where those people are coming from, but on the other side of that, you know, the city isn't in the business of shutting down the plant, nor could we shut down the plant directly. And so it's not the city versus agriculture. I want people in the agricultural committee, community to know that. We're open for business. They can come here and spend their money. We're working with the plant to figure out how to fix those issues. And, you know, to the extent that we can, we'll hold them to the same standard that we hold all of our other businesses that are in the City of Fort Morgan to the extent that we can. And we're working on it, and we'll continue to work on it even though we're limited in what we can do. And I have more specific information that we'll be working on and trying to develop over time, but just want the, the public to know we're doing everything that we can at this point. And now, with some good news, actually, very sweet news. So I, I usually don't do this, but this letter was too good not to read to the council and to the public, because, you know, often people say, how can you live in Fort Morgan, you know, after coming and visiting and maybe smelling some things? And the answer is, is very simple and easy, and it's because of the people that live in this community. It's the people that work for the City of Fort Morgan. It's the people that make up why we do our jobs. And so I, I want to read this, and this will help you understand why. Fort Morgan is such a great community despite an occasional odor here and there. It says, "Mr. Wells, my name is Diane Ware. I have been a longtime resident of the City of Fort Morgan, in my home for forty-three years. I'd like to take a minute to recognize the Parks Department, Jerry Reese, Jorge Rico, Cody Doms. Please, or these young men..." Gives you an idea. I don't know if you've seen Jerry Reese. "These young men came to my home with the intent of cutting a very old tree that is on city property. I spent some time telling them about the tree and how and why it was so special to me and my husband, who's been deceased for two years. They listened, and as a result, my tree stands. They were considerate and figured out how to comply with, how, figured out to comply with their job, but also meet my needs, and for this, I was deeply touched and appreciate their efforts. They were polite, and I so appreciate the efforts and job they did trimming and cleaning up the area when they finished the work. In a world where courtesy, courtesies and respect seem to be becoming a thing of the past, these young men renewed my belief in human kindness. They should be recognized for their ethics and their hardworking, and they are hardworking guys, and the hardworking guys they are. The City of Fort Morgan, and specifically Parks Department, is lucky to have them. Sincerely, Mrs. Diana Ware." So, you know, this, I got this today in the mail and wanted to share it with council because I, I think it's representative of all this, all the employees that work at the City of Fort Morgan. I, I hear these stories regularly, and when people say, how can you live in Fort Morgan? The answer is because of the people. They're great people that live in this community, and they care about each other. And I'm very proud to be a part of the City of Fort Morgan because that is our focus and that is our goal. We provide exceptional customer service to the citizens and the people that we work for. And that's what we're here for. That's what we... That's what we're here for, that's what we do, and this is a great example of that. So I wanted to share that with council. Want to thank those fine young men for their exceptional work, and we'll definitely be recognizing them and the Parks Department for the work that they do. So, with that, did anybody else have any other announcements they needed to make? All right, yes?
I was just gonna say, you know, we went to CML, and it seems like every year, you come back with something that you thought was driving, and remember, first year, it was innovation, and the second year, it was growth and getting somebody to work on growth and development, and then it was fiber, and this year, the thing that I seem to pick up on that I think would be worth having some discussion at some point, is going digital. As far as like becoming a smart city, maybe becoming a source of news for the community, having ways to interact with them, there were just a couple of sessions that went to that I thought were really stimulating, and again, making me think of something that we might want to do as a city to, again, continue to be attractive to younger generations and newer companies as far as coming to Fort Morgan, so.
No, I think we were gonna bring that up when these two return, to...
No, to go over what everybody...
...light a little bit of conference that we did at...
I think, didn't Clint volunteer to go first?
He did.
No, he volunteered for us to do it while he was gone, however, we're gonna...
Oh, that's what it was.
He's gonna go first.
He's going to go first. So.
Good job, yeah.
There were some good things come out of that. Anybody else on the reports? None? Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. Believe it or not, there are no bids currently out. Under meetings, the Senior Center Advisory Board is scheduled to meet July 11th at 1:30 PM. Golf Course Advisory Board is scheduled to meet July 12th at 5:30 PM at Quail Dunes. The Library Advisory Board is scheduled to meet July 17th at 4:30 PM in the Museum Community Room. And the next city council regular meeting will be July 18th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Just a couple of quick announcements. They will be fixing the railroad spur on Main Street, so the northbound crossing of Main Street, railroad crossing will be closed tomorrow. They probably will close it early in the morning and hope to have it completed before the end of the day. That's, of course, subject to change, but, you know, there will be detours in place, and motorists are advised to avoid that area. Registering for adult coed sand volleyball right now, and magician Cody Landstrom will perform two programs at the Fort Morgan Public Library on Tuesday, July 11th, and there's more information on this and much more on our website.
Next, we have an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiation, or, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Fiber optics service provider. Would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your honor, I would offer a motion to go into executive session.
Second?
Have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Allison Howe, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.